All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. It's Monday, December the 5th, 2022. Our invocation will be provided tonight by Tim Allison, Chaplain and Bereavement Coordinator with the Visiting Nurses Association. Glad to have you here today, Tim. And you're one of the first people ever to be ready to go right at the start. So I'm very impressed that you're here. Thank you. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, thank you for the blessing and privilege of leadership. May everything that's done in this meeting reflect the calling that you have given us as we serve your people. And we pray most of all in this season of peace, peace for our families, our neighborhoods, our city, our country, and the world. May there be peace. Amen.
Join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
McCandless?
Here.
Steinmeier?
Here.
Hobart?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here. Next, we've got citizens' request. The first one we have on the agenda is Daniel. Is it Sturgeon?
Yes.
So, Daniel, please come forward. You have five minutes, and you've read the rules and agree to abide by them.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have a property at 9340 East US 24 Highway, and I purchased that property in 2009. For 35 years prior to that, it was a business called Little Donnelly's Radiator. At the time that I purchased that property, and ever since then, Jackson County, Independence Water, Independence Electric, and Chicago Title Company all stated that this was a commercial property. I've tried to take this up with zoning, but I didn't ever get a really good answer out of them. But all of them said it was a commercial property. And the only person that does it, the only time it ever came up that it wasn't a commercial property was probably around 2011 when I had a zoning violation for having trash or something out there. And when, the first couple of times I got violations, they stated that it was a commercial property. And then somewhere along the way, it went from a commercial to all of a sudden to a residential property. And we went from two or three tickets up to five or six tickets for the same offense. But that's not the problem. It's the zoning that I'm concerned about. Everybody else but the zoning commission says it's a commercial property. When I purchased it, Mr. Donnelly, the guy I bought it from, told me that there were certain restrictions, like I couldn't have automotive-related business there. At one point, like somewhere around 2011 or so, I was doing some work on it about the same time we had those violations, and the codes inspectors, not the violation people, but the codes inspectors themselves, the head guy of it and a bunch of other guys came in there, and they all said that I could have a carpet store there without a problem. They never objected that. They just wanted me to do some certain work to it. I took out a commercial permit to do some of the work, and then eventually I decided I wasn't going to do that because it really wasn't a viable place to be putting a carpet store because of the neighborhood. So my question is, how, at what point did it become a residential property, and shouldn't I be grandfathered in to the commercial property, I would think?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, please proceed.
I'm sorry. I didn't get the address you were speaking of.
9340. It's at the corner of Glenwood and 24. It used to be Little Donnelly's Radiator.
It's the building with the three bays?
Pardon?
The building with the three bays?
No, it doesn't have any garages. There's no bays there. It's a, when I first purchased it, it did have, and I put a glass storefront on the front of it. And I've used it for storage ever since. My question here is that I actually want to get a commercial zoning for it because I would like to be able to do something else with it besides what I'm doing now. And I want to find out if I actually have to go through this whole process, if I shouldn't already be zoned for commercial?
This is a great question for you and our city manager to get together and his staff to help address that.
Okay. Excellent.
I mean, we don't have, I certainly don't have the personal information to be able to grant you that, nor is the city council, but it'd be something that if you could, is that correct, Mr. Walker? Do you, is that good guidance, or what would you recommend?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
And I would be happy to work with you as well. I pulled up the wrong address, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Next, we have Mr. Nesbit, and can you state your address, please, and?
3817 South Milton Drive. We got an audience coming up tonight about Nolan Road Streetscape. Basically, we brought it up, I guess, they brought it to us at the street commission. It's a nice project. It's $10 million grant. Yes, it's grant money, but you gotta remember, grant money is also taxpayer's money. So it's money that taxpayers paid in. I know we can get it if we approve this project. The thing about this project is, is really taking Nolan Road down to two lanes from 23rd to 24. Yes, there is commercial property on there. They stated that there's not, but there is. So I think they misstated that to us when in the meeting we were in. So as I see is that we probably need to do some more studies on bicycle traffic, maybe, instead of going out and spending millions of dollars to change the road to two lanes to put in bicycles. I mean, I don't know how many people use bicycles down Nolan Road. There are sidewalks there. They also said this is going to be for bus stops. There's bus stops there. So I don't understand why they're saying we got to do this to get this when it's already there. I know a couple of council people already said that they'd probably be opposed changing Nolan Road from four-lane to two-lane. So I'd like to, you guys get that off consent agenda and talk about it before you approve doing, stepping forward this project. You got to remember, to get a $10 million grant, that maybe only costs 80% of it, so we still got to come up the rest of money. Can the city afford to do the rest of that right now, or in the future? I mean, we got to look at things like that also. Nolan Road's good doing down through there. Traffic flow's fine. Sidewalks look good. There is a few spots missing sidewalks, but that is on city property, what I see. So that's some things we need to think about. There's some other places that probably need sidewalks worse than Nolan Road area there that are on major thoroughfare, so we need to look into that. So what I say is, we need to consider other parts of the area than strictly just that Nolan Road corridor there. I mean, it'll look nice, yes, if you guys go through with it, yes. But I think we need to think about the cost to the citizens and how many people actually ride bicycles through that area. Are we going to have one, two a day? When it gets cold, we're cold here about three, four months a year, people might not ride bicycles. So now we got a road, bicycle traffic not even being used. My opinion is, it might be a little bit of waste of money doing that. We got sidewalks. Maybe we just need to widen the sidewalks because people can ride the bicycles on the sidewalks also. So I'm just thinking that's what needs to be done, instead of moving forward without even talking about it on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation recognizing Dr. Jason Snodgrass as the Missouri Association of Superintendents has selected you as Superintendent of the Year. So I'm going to be the first to congratulate you on that. And Madam City Clerk, can you please read the resolution?
A resolution recognizing Dr. Jason Snodgrass as the MASA Superintendent of the Year, whereas Dr. Snodgrass was nominated by a number of individuals in the district and community of this, before this award, and whereas he had to complete an extensive application package that was sent to the selection committee, and whereas the selection committee was made up of MASA members, one of, one from each region of the state, whereas Dr. Snodgrass was notified that he was a finalist, then was surprised with an announcement that he was the MASA Superintendent of the Year, and whereas he will be recognized at the American Association of School Administrators National Conference on Education in February of 2023, and whereas the independent city council wants to recognize and congratulate Dr. Jason Snodgrass on his achievements and thank him for being an outstanding leader of the community.
Would you like to get a picture? In fact, we have a motion to approve the resolution.
To approve that resolution? Move to approve the resolution recognizing Dr. Jason Snodgrass as the MASA Superintendent of the Year.
Second.
Got a motion and second and a debate. Well, I heartily agree with the MASA's approach to it, so very, very good. With no further debate, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Thank you. This brings us to the consent, excuse me, the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Very good. Do we have a second? We've got a motion in a second. Thank you. Any items for consideration to be removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Could you please remove number three and number five from the reports and recommendations, and number 22820 from the resolutions?
So if I'm hearing you correctly, council member, number three, number five, and what else?
22820 from the resolutions.
Okay. So we'll pull out number three, number five, and 22820. Okay? Anyone else? If we're going to do any more, then we've got to do all of them by themselves. All right. With no further discussion, we'll go ahead and approve the consent agenda, and then we'll discuss the, and vote on the items that were pulled. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. The consent agenda, as it's stated, is approved, and then we're going to discuss those items that are pulled off. The first item that we'll do is item number three. Madam City Clerk, could you read that, just please?
Sure. Council action has requested to authorize the city manager to direct city staff to begin design work on the Nolan Road Complete Streets Project, including initial traffic studies, and to accept the $10.16 million in raised grant funds awarded to this project from the United States Department of Transportation.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be voting no on this. I'm just, I don't agree with the use of the taxpayer dollars for it. Personally, I drive through these on a regular basis in other cities, and I'm just not a huge fan of them. So I will be voting no on it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. I'll be supportive of this action at this time. Moving forward, what this will allow us to do is be able to do traffic studies and get some data. I imagine that the long game would be to have, once the initial data and information is given to the, to the city for, to digest, to have some community discussions regarding this project and future projects going into the future. But review this project, get input, feedback, see what the traffic study says, and also how we should proceed moving forward. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, at any point in time, we can halt this process by not accepting the grant?
So this is going to allow, this is going to direct city staff to proceed forward with engaging in design services? My suspicion is that that will be an amount that's going to require us to come to you for approval of an award, of an agreement there. And then, of course, if there was a decision made to proceed toward construction, that would have to go through a competitive bid process. And, but yes, at any time notice could be given back to the federal government that the city does not intend to move forward and remit those grant dollars.
Thank you. So I do want to say this because this is a highly competitive grant, and so thank you to the staff for going and chasing it down and grabbing this. This stirred up quite a conversation in the community, as you can imagine. Both was positive and some constructive criticisms in different conversations. So as this moves forward, we'll definitely keep the conversation going with the proper data, so.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I too, I, I'm always nervous when we have, I'm always grateful when, when federal tax dollars come back to our state and our city, and when our elected officials do so. I'm always, I'm always grateful for that. But when they say that with this money, you can only do these things, that's where I struggle with it. In principle, we know what's best for our city. I would love to see the $10 million come and hand it to the city manager and, and say, "Go fix your streets and your curbs." We know what's best for our city. We drive these streets every day. I am always a little nervous when they dangle carrots in front of us and say, "Here's $10 million. It only costs you three, but you've got to do this with it and this only." So I, I wish there was a way where our elected officials would consult with us and see if there's ways to move that money into the actual street improvements of our city without having to go in and, and, well, we have a lot of conversations on the intermodal part ongoing with bus services and things like that. It's expensive. So to make these changes to accommodate some bike traffic, we don't know how much bike traffic, we ask a center point in our city to be revised to accommodate some bike traffic. That means that many, many people, the majority of people in this city probably will have to have some inconvenience along the way. And so I, I wish that we, we didn't have these restrictions on this $10 million. I wish they would allow us to improve our streets and curbs where we see fit and feel like it's best served. Also, since it's going to be repaid by the, the street sales tax, I always wonder how taxpayers feel about having to pay something back that we, we had stipulations on. So I would like to see that money given to the city to take care of our streets and curbs where we see fit, and not have the federal government tell us what we have to do with it. So I'll be voting no on it.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Ask a question to the city manager. So, Mr. Manager, city manager, question I would have is, my understanding is for design and including traffic study, would that be accurate?
That would be accurate.
And so, once that's completed, then I'm assuming that we will receive that information back. I'm assuming we would have a study session. We'd get other input, as Mr. Perkins said, from the community. All that is a part of the process. Is that correct?
Right. So some of you and your constituents may be familiar with where the, the traffic counters are laid out across the street, those ropes, for lack of a better term, that count vehicle traffic through a certain corridor. So that'll give you both time of day and total counts of traffic through that area, and provide that information as part of that next decision-making process that the council would need to decide about whether to move forward with, with construction. That data will also be used by your city traffic engineer to determine, not all of the scope of the project has been, you know, fully defined. It's largely defined, but not fully. And so some of that would be baked into that recommendation about whether or not to proceed and how that, how best to proceed as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Please proceed.
I had the opportunity to have good conversation with Lisa Reynolds, who has been shepherding this effort. And just as a reminder, in 2011, City of Independence passed their Complete Streets policy, which set out rules around us being able to, when available, make multimodal transport a priority for the city. And the raised grant is not just a grant for asking for general funds to fix our streets. It's dedicated to be able to think about us as pedestrians, cyclists, mass transit, as well as, as car transit. My understanding, and may I ask, city manager?
Please.
Is that if we do overlay, at that point, we need to bring our sidewalks up to ADA compliance, which I know that we are woefully behind in the city in meeting compliance for many of our sidewalks to be under the ADA purview. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So while this is money that is given to the state after an extensive review process, we are very lucky and rare to get a raised grant. So I am very grateful that the feds are willing to invest in us. I do know if we say no, we are unlikely to qualify for future federal grants. So it's not just this opportunity that we would have to examine. It would be future opportunities as well. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I just want to say that I'm genuinely excited about the chance for Independence to embrace its citizens that don't have a car or use car travel. I understand and appreciate the comments of my fellow council members that, you know, conditions might be better, or there might be more ideal circumstances. But it's a rare opportunity. Staff has, has pulled a rabbit out of its hat on this one. Thank you, Ms. Reynolds and Mr. Walker. And I'm a big yes on this one. I'm excited for, I'm excited to see how this works out. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just one more question.
Sure.
Is there a timeline that we have to do the study and put the wheels in motion, prove it, and move forward with it?
If the council would indulge, I would ask the Municipal Services Director to come up and confirm that for us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lisa Reynolds, Municipal Services Director. Yes, there is a timeline. We would need to obligate funds by September of '26. And I believe the construction spend down would be September of, I think it's '31, but I would need to verify. The obligation of funds would be by 2026.
Okay. So is there a timeline to have the study back that everybody's wanting?
There's no timeline for the study, just to keep things in motion. And to answer one of the, in response to one of the comments earlier, our intention would be, after the traffic study, yes, to bring that back in study session, and also to take that information into public meetings and have those discussions. We don't want to have the public meetings without having our personal, our city data. We can look at studies from around the country. There are many to choose from. You can Google any major metro area and find a Complete Streets project that is very similar to this project. But our residents are going to want to see our traffic data. So we wanted to have that tailored information before we set up those public meetings.
And one more question. Will, will our first responders, will they have any input into the traffic study in terms of their concern for safety?
They always.
And, and, you know, they're on time, timelines of response. Is this going to, will they have some input into whether this will hinder in any way their response times, since that is the city center that we're looking to alter?
And, and we, public safety is always prime importance across any department and citywide. That is paramount. We absolutely will include them in the discussions and have that as a consideration, along with just simple traffic count data. The traffic study's not going to be just count. We want count in certain circumstances. We'll look at different times of day. It's also speed-related, because a lot of this is just safety of the corridor. We have at least two pedestrian fatalities in this corridor over the last few years, and more than double the citywide average in pedestrian and bicycle accidents and severe injury along this 1.7-mile stretch. So that's really kind of the focus, is just safety for all street users, not just vehicular users. So we will be considering public safety statistics, speed of vehicles, counts of vehicles, and all kinds of data will go into this study.
Anyone else? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, please give us a motion on this one.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay. Got a motion in a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. It passes five to two. Okay, and we pulled item number five. Madam City Clerk, if you can read that one for us, please.
Council action has requested to issue a purchase order to Tricom Technical Services for Cybersecurity Services.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, so this is a temporary position. Is it just going to be like one person that's going to be to fill the position, or could it be like, it's a company? Could it be like multiple people over the six months, or how would that work?
Yeah. Well, that's a fair question. And again, if the council would indulge, I'd ask our chief human, or chief IT slash Christmas light guy to come up here and...
Just gave me a promotion, too. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Chris Johnson, I'm the manager of the Municipal Cyber Center, which is also responsible for our cybersecurity for the city. So to answer your question directly, this is not a temporary position, but rather a contract-to-hire agreement with Tricom. So it gives us basically a six-month test drive of the candidate before we hire them to a full-time position. So they'll be working within the full scope of that role for six months as a contractor, under the obligations of that contract, perform those duties. And then at the end of that six months, we have the option to exercise bringing them on as a full-time employee. So it basically removes the hiring risk for a very high-demand, low-volume skill set.
Right. And I was, I was happy to see this put on there because, as you know, I've been a big proponent of cybersecurity in that we need to spend more money, especially in this position. So once this position's hired, will they be reporting to somebody in tech services, or they're reporting to somebody else?
Yes, they'd be a direct report to me.
To you?
Yes.
And you're in charge, you said you're in charge of cybersecurity right now?
Correct.
Okay. And you report to Jason, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I don't have anything further. I'll move for, I'll make a motion for approval on this item.
There's motions in a second. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
If I could, Mr. City Manager, what are we spending for cybersecurity as a city? What is, what's that budget number?
Between personnel and other contracts for services?
No, just, what do we allocate for cybersecurity? Do you, do you know?
I, we've got positions like Mr. Johnson's here that are allocated to it, as well as contracts with outside vendors. So I don't have that dollar amount tab. Would you have a ballpark, Mr. Johnson?
Not, not with enough accuracy.
I can calculate that. I can pull that for you. Yes.
We've had this discussion in the past, you know, of what municipalities are spending because of the, the increased activity. I read the other day, actually, I saw a report of the number of cyber attacks worldwide. Do you know what that number is per day?
I know that we, as a city, see triple digits every day.
Triple digits mean what? Hundreds, thousands?
Hundreds.
Hundreds, hundreds, close to a thousand? Because the national, or the worldwide number that I saw was 14 million a day, a day. So we've already endured one serious hack in, what was it, a year ago? November, wasn't it?
Two, two years ago.
Two years ago? Yeah. Okay. So I'm, I am also a big... Okay, so I'm, I am also a big advocate for increased spending to make sure that all of our data, everyone that sits in this room, that we're doing everything we can to make sure that it's safe and secure. It's a difficult job. I hope this works out. And I, you know, I don't want you going to the bargain bin for someone like this. I really want a top-notch person in that cybersecurity role. And I hope that we can have serious conversations on how to increase, maybe in a study session, increase or improve our cybersecurity as a city. If we can do that at some point, Mr. Mayor, that would be wonderful. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Roland?
Yes, the item passes seven to zero. That brings us to 22-820.
A resolution appointing members to the Charter Review Commission.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So before we take the, probably the final vote on this, something I may, probably should have brought up in the past, do we know if we're going to livestream these meetings, or if they're going to be recorded in any fashion for review later on? The reason I ask is, I think this is a really important commission, and I think it should be available for constituents and the residents of cities to view when they, if they would like to, has that been decided?
I know it will be a public hearing. They'll be posted, and people can attend it just like they are here.
So, so at no point, I mean, there's no intention to record it or anything, or even livestream it at this point?
I understand.
Okay.
As far as I know, no.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, could I get a resolution on, for the next city council meeting, that these meetings to be televised?
We will work with you on that.
Okay.
And then I will also let the council know, following your strategic planning session, the Public Information Officer is working on a revised resolution regarding the broadcast of meetings following that conversation that we had. So we'll, we'll bring both of those items forward for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. I'm making motion for approval on that item.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay. Madam City Clerk?
Yes. I just would like to request of my fellow council members that since I am a new appointee and was not part of the nomination process, whether this body would consider allowing me to put forward members to be part of the Charter Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Roland?
Yes, and the item is approved seven-zero. And this brings us to the regular agenda discussion. And this brings us to our first public hearing. And I will tap the gavel to open the public hearing. This is a full public hearing, and anyone who is here to support or oppose will have the opportunity to speak.
A public hearing for the amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code relating to short-term rentals. Full public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This code revision was considered by Planning Commission on October 25th of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this code revision. This revision proposal is currently, Chapter 14, 420 of our code. Several things to note here. This particular code update was originally adopted back in 2018. City staff and Planning Commission members got with hotel and motel alliances, along with many bed-and-breakfast operators, to initiate the short-term rental code that we have today. Back in 2019, we had an amendment that limited short-term rentals to one per block face and five units per property owner. Today, with concerns from, obviously, citizens, neighbors, Planning Commission members, staff, as well as members of this council, we have before you today this update or this revision. I'm not going to go through every highlight, but, you know, staff did take all those into consideration. And we looked at many cities across the country, from Florida, South Carolina, to Colorado, California, Seattle, just look at some of their short-term rental codes, as well as listening to the public to see what the concerns that they've had, and some of the issues that we've currently had. And so, kind of just going through briefly some of these highlights that are in your packet, we did take out the bed-and-breakfast component that was combined with the short-term rentals. And so we created 14-424, which is its own code revision. It works its own code. That's part of this revision. We clarified that short-term rentals are only allowed in single-family and duplex housing, making sure that multifamily housing and basically houses that may have had units off to the side or something like that are not, not allowed to have a short-term rental. We did require that the transient guest tax agreement must be in place if it's not already paid through a provided web-based browser. We actually have language that our city council from Municipal Labor Law helped us put together, that also has a document or an agreement that's in place that we'll have to have with the applicant if there isn't something already collecting that transient tax. This particular code includes a new amendment to have a 500-foot distance between short-term rentals, which is in addition to the block face. And we do require this, that the applicant have a responsible agent that's within an hour of this particular short-term rental here at the City of Independence. And they have to be able to respond within an hour if there's an issue that city staff contacts them. We do prohibit weddings, banquet's, parties, and we are requiring a million dollars of liability insurance that's spelled out specifically with this code revision. We've also included the fact that short-term rentals are non-transferable, and we are requiring monitoring devices, sound devices, which is not currently in our current code. We do outline a revocation process now. Short-term rental operator, if they're cited for two or more offenses in a three-month period, they have violations that endanger the public or public safety, failure to pay any of their taxes, transient guest tax, sales tax, or property taxes, or represent any kind of fraud or misinterpretation or false information to the city while acquiring their permit, they can go through that revocation process, which is a public hearing through the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission now has an outline of the things that they need to consider for that revocation. So with that, I have no new information to provide. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else here to speak in opposition or support?
Good evening. My name is Lee Phillips. I live at 14, excuse me, 1423 South Meewood Avenue. Mr. Mayor and esteemed members, members of the council, I rise tonight to speak on behalf of my recently affected neighbors. We ask for your no vote on the revisions as written. They are lacking clarity, and this draft has many inadequacies, including, but not limited to, the area of affected homeowners' rights and remedies. As it stands now, the only legal remedy we have is to make a police report and to register a complaint with an Airbnb website. The companies that run those sites spend millions of dollars every year in hush money to sweep those online complaints under the rug. This is a subject we would like to chat about later, but tonight, our goal is to respectfully ask for your no vote on this revision. There is much more to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in opposition or in favor?
Butch Nesbitt, 3817 South Milton Drive. Okay, I'm on the Planning Commission. We brought this up to you guys. It's a good plan. My opinion is, we don't go far enough. We need to enforce this code more. I don't know how we enforce it more. We've got to get, figure out how to enforce it. You all probably saw on the news how Kansas City lost millions of dollars on enforcing tax receipts for these short-term rentals. I'm sure we've got the same problem going on here. We don't have a way to enforce it. We don't have the teeth to bite it. I mean, I'm in favor, yes, but we need to go a little bit farther. I don't know, staff, we need to figure out a way to go a little bit farther so we can enforce this a little bit stronger. I mean, that's, that's one of the things that we're, that we see that's coming up, because, I mean, we're not enforcing it, like people say. They get a violation, she says, swept under the rug, and they go right back to doing it. I like to know how many people are doing it without even getting a license, because I remember people bringing it up here to Planning Commission. They were doing it. They were doing it for months before they went and got the, tried to get it. We disapproved it. I don't know if they're still doing it or not. I don't go around checking. I don't know if we have people that go around and check it. So we just got to have a way to enforce this code stronger, but I don't know how to do it. We need some recommendations to get this done.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor of speaking in opposition or support? Anyone else in support or opposition? With that, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I'm going to make a motion to postpone our vote on this for 60 days. I've discussed that with Mr. Walker and many members of council. I genuinely appreciate the time and effort that community development has put into this, that Planning Commission spent in considering it. There are a few items, along with what one of our speakers said, that I am hopeful we can find some creative ways to possibly bolster, to help both our community and our city at the same time. So I would like one final look at that before we come back for a vote.
So I'm here, you've got a motion to postpone this for 60 days, if I'm hearing correctly?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Any further debate?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I don't disagree necessarily with Councilmember Hobart. I just think, I mean, 60 days, you know, can be a long time. What if we get it done before then? Can it be modified, like up to 60 days? What if you get something determined before that? Can we bring it back before that?
I would have, certainly, as the maker of the motion, I would have no objection to that. I'll, we did do a six-month moratorium anyway. So ultimately, as long as we get it done before then, it's not going to affect anybody.
Okay.
That's my take. But if we can get it done sooner, I would be happy to bring it back personally.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I agree. I think my, my biggest concern is the enforcement piece that we, we talked about. I don't, I just think we, we have to have all of these things in place, and we have to have some accountability to, to neighborhoods and communities that are going to have these, these situations in their neighborhoods, on their streets, as neighbors. So if there's more that we can do in terms of putting together some type of plan that brings a level of accountability and a little comfort to the folks, and make sure that we have that enforcement piece in place, that's my biggest concern, is that enforcement piece. The other components with all of the platforms, I think you're, you're working on those contracts, is that correct?
So we, the city has had, for some number of years now, a voluntary remittance and collection agreement with Airbnb. We are getting one in place right now with VRBO, one of the other major platforms in which that service is facilitated.
Sure. And that, and if there are other platforms that come up, then we have to make sure that we have agreements put in place.
Correct.
All right.
Any further discussion? Hearing, no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Roland?
Yes. So the motion passes to basically postpone this for 60 days. And it passed seven to zero. Thank you. This opens our second public hearing, and this is a public hearing with new information only.
A public hearing for the application by Jenny Belbisi requesting a rezoning from R12-2 Family Residential to C2 General Commercial for the property located at 9300 East US24 Highway. New information only.
Thank you again. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on October 25th as well. Planning Commission, Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This is a gas station that was recently purchased, and it's been in operation for over 50 years. The owner wished to make improvements to it and realized that the property is actually zoned R12, and therefore is requesting a C2 zoning. I have no new information to provide.
Any questions? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
Bill number 22109, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R12-2 Family Residential to District C2 General Commercial for the property located at 9300 East US24 Highway in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Any further debate? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Roland?
Yes. And the rezoning is approved seven to zero. This brings us to our third public hearing. This is also a new information-only public hearing.
A public hearing for the application by Jake Wimmer for a preliminary development plan approval for a new Mid-Continent Public Library at approximately 4505 South Little Blue Parkway. New information only.
And please forgive me, I forgot to hit the gavel. Please proceed.
Thank you again. This preliminary development plan was also considered by Planning Commission on October 25th of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this plan. And as the clerk had mentioned, this is for the construction of a new Mid-Continent Public Library just east of, or what they call the East Independent Branch, along Little Blue Parkway, which is just west of the newly constructed Trinity Apartment Complex. I have no new information to provide.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any debate or questions by council members?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Very briefly, I'd just like to say that I sure hope that, I believe funding may still be an issue for this, or approval by the school, or the library board. However, I'm still excited by the idea of a new library out there. We've got a lot of exciting stuff going on out there, and a library is a, is a great resource for folks.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I just want to join in with Councilmember Hobart. The Mid-Continent Public Library, as you recall, we increased by a vote of the people. We increased our levy. The Oversight Board for the library then voluntarily reduced it, which may put some of these building renovations and new opportunities in jeopardy. They'll be taking their vote on December 13. This is an especially important library for our city. It is in a growing portion of the community. It, we have more than 18,000 students in our city where library access, and for older residents, library access is so important. So I will be voting in favor of this and strongly encourage our friends at the Mid-Continent Public Library Board to make the choices necessary to be able to fulfill those promises they made to their voters. Thank you.
Anyone else? And I, too, will echo those opinions. I think this is very important for this project to be completed in the area. And with no further discussion, we'll go ahead and take the roll. Madam City Clerk?
Bill number 22-110, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for the property at 4505 South Little Blue Parkway in District R18, PUD Medium Density Residential Planned Unit Development in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Roland?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. This will be our fourth public hearing. I'll tell you what, we'll use that gavel mat for both the close of the last one and the open of this one. What do you think?
A public hearing for the application received from Casey Liquor One LLC for the retail selling of of intoxicating liquor of all kinds in the original package, including Sunday sales for Casey Liquor located at 9811 East US 40 Highway. Full public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Tom Skinnell. I'm the Community Development Director. Uh, so Casey Liquor has operated along Fort, Forti Highway for, for many years. Uh, the operations are, are changing hands. There's going to be a new owner there. Uh, they're going to continue the same operation that, uh, has operated there, there before. They are going to sell, uh, retail liquor, uh, in the original package. Uh, just giving you a little brief, uh, survey of what's around there. The, uh, closest establishment that has a liquor license is, uh, approximately 950 feet to the, to the east. Uh, there are no schools or churches around there. However, there is residential within 300 feet of, of this, uh, and this application does meet the, uh, Alcohol Beverage Code. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Anyone here to speak in opposition or in favor? Anyone here to speak in opposition or in favor? Third time. Anybody here to speak in favor or opposition? All right, with that being said, uh, we'll close that. Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Council action is requested regarding the application received from Casey Liquor 1 LLC for the retail selling of intoxicating liquor of all kinds in the original package, including Sunday sales for Casey Liquor located at 9811 East US 40 Highway.
Any further debate? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and this passes seven to zero. This takes us to second readings and, uh, so please proceed, Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 22-104, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Public Transit Operating Assistance Grant in the amount of $83,599 for operating expenses associated with transit service for the period July 1, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, and making the necessary appropriations. Second and final reading.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and this item also passes seven to zero. Thank you. And that'll bring us to 22-105.
Bill number 22-105, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of funding from the US Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Office of Justice Programs, Fiscal Year 2021, Burn Justice Assistance Grant, JAG program, through a memorandum of understanding with Jackson County, Missouri, which allocates $57,226.68 to the City of Independence, Missouri, for the police department's use, appropriating the necessary funds and authorizing future change orders and appropriations for the same project. Second and final reading.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and this also passes seven to zero. Okay.
Bill number 22-106, approval is recommended to issue a purchase order to Basinger Police Supply, Inc., in the sum of $80,000 for new padded seatbelt systems for all sworn officers.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Rowland? Sorry.
That's okay.
Writing down one. My mistake. Okay, bill number, oh.
Mayor, may I just make a clarification that it's padded belts, not padded seatbelts? Because they're the belts that they wear. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Uh, well, let's ask, uh, Mr. Kovar if we need to adjust anything or make an amendment to how it's stated here. Think we're good? All right. Thank you. Please proceed, Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 22-108, an ordinance approving a final plat for Cargo Largo Replat A in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and that also passes seven to zero. And that brings us to information only.
We've got a first reading, emergency item.
Oh, excuse me. This takes us to our, well, let me do that then.
Yep.
This takes us to our first reading, and it's also an emergency item. We'll receive two readings tonight, so Madam City Clerk, please read the bill twice.
Bill number 22-510, an ordinance authorizing issuance of a purchase order to General Electric for the emergent repairs of combustion turbine H5 for $1,999,647, or I'm sorry, $1,999,647.27, authorizing future change orders not to exceed $199,964.70 and appropriating $2,199,611.97 from the Power and Light Reserve Fund Balance to, to fund this repair and declaring an emergency. Bill number 22-510, an ordinance authorizing issuance of a purchase order to General Electric for the emergent repairs of combustion turbine H5 for $1,999,647.27, authorizing future change orders not to exceed $199,964.70 and appropriating $2,199,611.97 from the Power and Light Reserve Fund Balance to fund this repair and declaring an emergency. Second and final reading.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, I think it was brought up in the study session. Mr. Menel stated that, I think it was a question by Councilmember Fears, could it possibly be GE's fault? And, um, he brought up maybe if they wound the turbine or something. I don't remember exactly, but what, who would make the determination if it was their fault and if it was, they were possibly going to cover the cost of it?
That would probably have to come through litigation, the city, through discovery.
So I mean, if we did think it was their fault, we'd have to sue them essentially?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But I, that would, that would probably be the most expeditious manner to getting to a outcome on that, a determination.
When we sign a contract with them to do this, I, I mean, is it basically a contract they give us and say, "Sign it," or, I mean, is there any type of negotiation with it?
As far as price goes?
As far as just, you know, I mean, if something's their fault, I mean, I just, I don't know, it just seems like there's a lot of money to put out when it very well could have been their fault that it happened.
It, I will say that they are not assuming any responsibility for that right now.
And they probably won't, am I?
That would be, probably you and I would be very right on that, that they are not going to assume any responsibility without some third party making a determination of said fault.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Um, if I may, Mr. Walker, um, is, is H6 also, uh, having issues?
Uh, I would have to ask the Power and Light Director.
Can we ask him?
The council's fine with that. I'd be happy to bring him up.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, Jim Nail, Director IPL. The H6 turbine is currently out of service. It's not anything to do with the turbine or generator. It's the transformers that connect it to our grid. Uh, there was a failure there, and until we can get transformers out of the supply chain, that will be, that'll, it'll be out of service.
And we have no timeframe on that at this point?
You can get all kinds of estimates on those time, on those delivery dates.
Yeah, so, um, so we're really kind of in a corner on this one with H5 down, H6, um, in limbo, uh, in terms of generation, right? If being called upon, do, do we have the ability to do it?
Those are two of our six, so the other four are, uh, in fact, all through this summer and fall, the other four have been called on quite frequently.
Right.
Um, so there, we're, we're responding to Southwest Power Pool as best we can.
So if we have to, just to remind everybody, if we have to, because we, we have another one go down. I mean, they're, they're old, right? And if, if we're, four, it could be three. We just don't know. What, to buy capacity, what are we talking, uh, money-wise per month to do so?
The estimate, the estimate this summer, and we would have to go back and, and reevaluate those because costs have been changing, but the, the estimate this summer to replace 17 megawatts, which was about, about one turbine, the estimate for, uh, 17 megawatts is about $500,000 to $600,000 a year.
A year?
A year.
Okay. Okay, so, and, and then what's our timeframe again? If we make these repairs, how long are we, is that going to take?
Well, that's going to depend partly on GE and what they find. Uh, the way this is structured, they will come to us. Uh, the initial disassembly will be, will take place here with our people participating, and in the best of possible worlds, when they pull the cover, they'll see what's the problem is and we'll be able to fix it here. If that's not the case, then the entire assembly has to be shipped off to a GE facility, uh, worked into their very busy winter maintenance schedule. And again, depending on parts availability and what they find, that'll determine the, the timeframe.
So best-case scenario, how, how long down? They come in, they open it up, go, "It's the widget right here."
Barring complications from weather and such, I would hope that, uh, pulling off the cover, seeing it, being able to make the repair a month or two and we'd be done.
Worst-case scenario, we know what's broken, but we can't get the part.
Six months.
Six months, okay. Okay, that gives us an idea. Thank you.
Mayor Rowland?
Please proceed.
Mr. Nail, if we are making a good faith effort to repair our turbines, SPP does not penalize us for not having that generative ability. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
Southwest Power Pool right now is considering a, a change to their, uh, credit capacity or their capacity-credit formula, which would penalize you for, uh, time that you are unable to meet that demand. They had, they, they will implement that in phases, so, uh, the longer it's down, the more of an impact that would have on us.
But, but for us right now?
Right now, we are not being penalized. Um, if we're unable to meet our demand by, uh, the summer, then we would possibly face penalties.
And can you elaborate on the dollar amount for those penalties?
SPP has a formula they use. They, they evaluate how much you're short and they evaluate, they assume that you're short because you are avoiding the decision to purchase the amount you need. Uh, and so the, right now, that, that would be, oh. I don't, I don't want to give you a number that's inaccurate, but it's, it's, it's a hefty fine because they're assuming that you're voluntarily choosing not to meet your obligation, and they fine you accordingly.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just a, a general comment here, not nothing for Mr. Nail, but, um, and that is that, you know, this, uh, this ordinance is asking for appropriation of almost $2.2 million from our reserve fund balance. And, you know, oh, comments from the community about, concerns about how high our fund balance is or how not high it is, or, you know, I, I just want to make a reference to this kind of an appropriation, um, when, you know, we, we are, you know, I hear concerns about how high the balance is and, and when we're spending this kind of money for, um, you know, repairs, uh, not buying something new by any stretch, but just something that's a repair, that's why our fund balance needs to be so high for, um, for, uh, Power and Light. And so that's just a comment to the, to the citizens of, of our city. Uh, if they have concern about how much is there, it's because the, when we're, when we're talking about expenditures out of this, it's, uh, we're talking a lot of money, and that's the reason. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, I will just state my position on this. Uh, I know the staff has worked really hard on this and it's, it's a challenging task, but one of my thoughts is we need a comprehensive plan for IPL to be an ongoing concern that is both profitable, sustainable. And at this moment, we need to work on that very, very seriously to make that happen. Uh, so I'll, I'll vote yes with great reluctance, but I'll also be very, very reluctant to see if, uh, anything else further without a significant business plan going forward that's going to be comprehensive on how IPL should be run and how it should be done. So that's, um, my thoughts on it. Anyway, with that being said, uh, seeing no other further discussions, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Well, I hate to stop a trend, but I'll go ahead and vote yes, but, uh, so the item does in fact pass seven to zero, and that brings us to information only. Is that right? Yeah, yeah, but it's information only. It's there. All right. Uh, this will bring us to councilmembers' comments. Mr. Stewart, do you have any comments this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually do. I, uh, so I had the privilege of doing a ride-along with the Independence Police Department about a week ago, and, um, so my own law enforcement career, I've had a lot of citizen contacts. It's always kind of interesting to observe, you know, just being an observer. And, uh, so I just want to say that I was, I was very encouraged, uh, by some of the things that I seen. I, um, when the officer that I was riding with, um, wasn't handling calls for service, he was actually doing what I consider proactive policing, you know, he was looking for stuff and, which I, I really always liked to see that. So hopefully he wasn't doing it for my benefit, but I, after talk, well, talking to him, I don't think he was. I think it's kind of a normal thing for him. Um, it was kind of discouraged at one point. I mean, well, not really, I mean, we had to arrest somebody at a quick trip for, um, trespassing, or he did, and, um, his professionalism was top-notch, so, Chief Dussman, thank you, you can pass that along. Um, but it was kind of, I, I'm curious, uh, you know, are, are calls like that for trespassing, are they kind of a, a thing? I mean, or, you know, it's, it seems like, not that it doesn't need to be done, but it seems like a, a, a resource that could be used elsewhere. You know, this happened to be a homeless gentleman, you know, they did find, you know, I don't know how fortunate, you know, they did find some illegal contraband on him, you know, um, so, and like I said, he was professional. It just seems like, you know, it just brings it back to the homeless and the drugs and just a lot of problems, so, but for the most part, it was a good experience and thank you for allowing me to do that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmen. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Friday was, uh, Living Windows for, for those who came out and checked it out and had a good time. Um, it was a great time. A little windy, the wind died down, but I want to say thanks to the Independence Square Association and, and all the merchants that were opened and the volunteerisms that were there and the kids that came out and sang and just an overall good time. Speaking, uh, with the ISA director, they're estimating eight to 10,000 people showed up Friday night throughout the, uh, the evening. Um, a big thank you to the city hall for opening the tree. Looks great out there, so a, a great kudos to city staff and then everybody who put a ton of time and energy at the city hall and our city manager who played Grinch was, thanks for that. So anyway, good time. Eight to 10,000 people came to visit our Independence Square. About 15 to 20%, they estimate, comes from outside the city. So it was a great event, fun time.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So just a couple of comments. Uh, one, a week ago, we spent the day together in strategic planning. Uh, just my comment is that that was a very profitable day, a good day for us in a number of respects, but I, I felt real good about the outcomes from that. I'll look forward to the additional information that's going to be provided by the consultant that helped us through that planning process and look forward to, you know, future meetings in, in that regard. And, uh, then just a, um, a comment to you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to take your place as mayor of Whoville on Friday night in Living Windows. That was, uh, it was a good time. It really was. Uh, John talked about that, uh, Councilmember Perkins talked about the Living Windows. It was a good event and, um, It was a good event, and, you know, we had two singing groups from two different schools, and lots of, you know, people wanted to take pictures with, mostly with the Grinch. They really, I was in a lot of pictures as Mayor of Whoville, but they really wanted the Grinch. So, it was a good, good event, good day, and I'm sure you'll talk about our activities on Sunday, or someone will, so I will talk about that.
I'll do that. Perfect. Councilmember Hobart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was in a window, incognito, of course, on Friday night as Santa Claus, which no one could possibly imagine. Had a fantastic time. I got the absolute pleasure and honor to be a one-month-old baby's first picture with Santa, and a two-month-old baby's first picture with Santa. It was very, very cool. So, great event. It warmed up, for whatever reason. The streets were packed. People had a great, great time. Thank you to the square folks. Thank you to city staff. Thanks to everybody, and happy holidays.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could, just to follow up, Mr. City Manager, on those, the question that I had about the flu shots, either the affordable, free flu shots for folks in our community that are not financially able to, to get their own, have we found anything out on that, or...
The Public Health Director and the Public, let me get this straight, Communications Manager, don't want to slight anybody a title there, have been working on some public communication about opportunities, of course, being careful not to promote any one agency or private sector group or the other, but they have been trying to make our community aware of the resources as they exist, of where they can potentially access those.
Can we make sure that we post that on all our social media sites for folks who, who might need that information so they can make some good decisions? Also, it's the holiday season time. This is the time of year where, you know, not everybody is all full of cheer and joy. We just watch your families, your friends, people that maybe are alone during the holiday season, that we make, that, those extra efforts to, to reach out to them and, and make sure they know they, they have a support system in place. I know our families dealing with COVID and flu and all that, so wash your hands, take care of each other, make sure that, that we're doing all the good things to keep everybody healthy going into the holiday season. On a sad note, we lost a friend of mine and a son of Independence, a gentleman by the name of Dave Tyson, I went to school with. I went to Crispin Junior High School. His dad was my PE teacher all three years. He's a retired independent school teacher. He passed away a few years ago. Dave's an only child and takes care of his mother. Dave died suddenly of a heart attack at McDonald's up on 24 Highway. And the thing I loved about Dave is he was a walking yearbook. He knew where everybody was, all our classmates, he knew, not because he was nosy, but he cared enough to just stay involved in people's lives. And he, he could tell you who was where, and how many kids, and who they married. He is someone that loved this community, was a great friend of Independence, was, like I said, a son of this city, and he will be dearly missed. And at 60 years old, that's just way too young. So, just, just wanted to mention his name tonight. I feel like honoring him and just letting him know and his family know that we, we care about them as well. So, that's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember?
I wanted to just issue a thank you to the Bingham Wagner volunteers who put on an absolutely beautiful event last weekend, all decorated for Christmas. If you have not been, it is well worth going. The other thing is I just wanted to thank my councilmembers. Councilmember Fears, Councilmember Hobart, for going to a community meeting at Nativity of Mary Church. They're working on neighborhood rejuvenation, starting up neighborhood councils again, and providing some of that local community leadership. And so I love to see people investing in their own neighborhood, so hats off to them. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And last but not least here, just a couple of things. On Sunday, I know Councilmember Fears and Councilmember Bridgette McCandless went to the Mayor's Christmas concert at the auditorium, where the fourth graders get to sing. If you've ever seen it, it is fantastic, and they did not disappoint. It was outstanding. They did a great job there. I thought the kids just sounded terrific, and it was just fun, fun, fun to be there. The Spirit of Independence Band was, again, terrific. I think they get better and better all the time, and I was really, really impressed. And every time I see them, they get better. So I just think that's a great, a great thing. We also had the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast here last week. It's been a blur with everything we've been doing. I just wanted to say publicly to thanks to Tina Rini for speaking about the power of forgiveness there. An incredibly powerful story. She lost her children, Sam and Lindsay, when their father unfortunately did the unthinkable. And she has since forgiven and moved on, and you can just see a spirit of tranquility in her life now. And she shared, I mean, I just heard from people who said that she was simply mesmerizing. And also, my friend, Father Toronto, also spoke about the power of forgiveness, and I just thought they did a great job. I'm also very, 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 very happy to finally announce the Charter Commission folks, and with us tonight, we also have Jackie Summers. So Jackie is going to chair the commission. She has extensive experience in this because she has also been the attorney for the City of Blue Springs and actually led them through the process. So that's why she was selected for her outstanding background and experience in doing that. Also, serving with her will be Mark McDonald, Pat Casey, Nick Huff, John Allender, Carmen Dehart, Bruce Frakes, Tom Waters, and Kevin Lathrum. And so I look forward to having you getting to work on that very, very important task, and I appreciate you taking the time to do that.